Okay, so I will open the meeting. This is the Wednesday, September 6, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. And our first order of business is to meet with the police chief. But before that, I want to make sure that if anybody's taping the meeting, identify yourself. Are you taping? No? Didn't think so. So we're meeting with our police chief regarding the request for an appointment of a new full-time police officer, Brian Wickston. So we received a request in writing from our chief to respectfully request the appointment of Brian Wickston to the position of police officer for the town of Lakeville. His position will fill an empty position due to a resignation in March. Brian graduated from the Redding Police Academy in August and is a self-sponsor. He attended on his own time and expense. He's gone through a complete background investigation, an oral board review. He's attending Bridgewater State University to attain a bachelor's degree and is a graduate of Middleborough High School. I feel Brian will be an excellent fit for our department. So he is requesting an appointment as of September 12, 2017, pending a successful completion of a physical and psychological examination. Frank, did you want to add anything to that?
No, that's pretty much it. We've been shorthanded since March. Be happy to have Brian on board. Commend him for, you know, as a self-sponsor, it's a very tough thing financially for somebody to go through the police academy on their own. Obviously, they focus on that, they can't work. I think it shows, you know, obvious dedication by Brian. So we're looking forward to having him join the department.
Great. Do you have any questions?
No.
No.
All right, well, I will move to appoint Brian Wickston as a Lakeville Police Officer Constable effective September 12, 2017, contingent upon successful completion of a physical and psychological testing, and for a one-year probationary period.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The motion carries. It's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Brian, this is your appointment form. You just need to get that to the town clerk and she'll take care of it for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Our second agenda item is to review and vote on a request from the animal control officer to increase adoption fees. David is here. David Freitz, thanks for joining us. He's requesting that we increase the fees from $255 to $350. Currently, $30 of the adoption fee is credited to the general fund for dog officer fees, and the remainder of it, $225, goes to the vet care donations to cover the cost of rabies vaccinations, spaying and neutering the pets, and other vet care costs, including prepping the dog for adoption. David's looking for some extra money for the sake of... Because the cost of spaying and neutering is going to increase in September. So this is just to cover the cost-
Right.
...on that side of it.
Plus, we're going to put chip... We're going to chip every dog after this goes through. We're going to have microchips.
Great.
Plus, we're losing a little bit of money. Every dog's going to be subsidized now with this price we got because they... Everybody brings them back for different things. It's almost like selling a used car now.
Oh, no.
I mean, everybody just... They find something wrong.
Do we not have that... You know that nonprofit that was doing money for...
No, they only... They started us up, so now we're on our own.
Okay.
That's why we need to keep money in there, because sometimes we'll get dogs back and then they'll go to a rescue and lost $255. So we actually need to make a little bit of money.
Gotcha.
The chip addition, is that much money?
That's going to be another... She's only going to charge me $18 to put that in.
Okay. Can you read the chips?
Yeah. That's what we're going to do, so if a dog is out there, we can...
You can identify it. You don't have to find the vet.
We have our own chip scanners.
Okay.
Get all the cable channels with it, too.
Yeah. Buy a dog.
All right, yeah, I don't have any questions about this. Does anybody else have...
No. I think adoption's the way to go. But I think... I hope that we... Not just us, that the adoption idea by charging $350 doesn't drive people away. But it's the right thing to do.
Right.
Spay and neutering cost money. It costs money, and we need to pass that on.
The average adoption at a rescue would everybody down was $500.
Right. No. No, you're still competitive, but it's a lot of money just to adopt a dog when you used to go to a dog pound and walk away with one for 10 to 25 bucks. That doesn't happen anymore.
I actually tell the people, you get the dog for... You're paying for the services.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
All right, so do we want to vote this? Okay, so I will move that we increase the fee to $350 for the adoption... The adoption fee of the Animal Control Department.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
The motion carries. It's unanimous.
Thanks for coming in, Dave.
No, thank you. Have a good night.
I'll call you about the other.
Just give me a call.
I will. Thanks.
All right, number three is to review and vote on job description for the non-union part-time IT director position. Draft copy of a proposed job description for an IT director. This position has already been appropriated to our budget. It allows somebody to come in part-time and take over this position. This is actually a critical step in the police station design, because one of the things we want this person to do is work with the architect to help determine the space needs for the new station relative to IT. So right now, they have a general understanding of the amount of space they need. It's really important, though, that we have somebody get more specifics on the equipment type and the number of conduits and all that kind of stuff for different spaces, so that they make sure that they design it properly for the computer and IT needs, so that we don't have to do it after the fact. So that's part of the reason why I think this is coming forward now. Anybody have any questions about it, or...
I mean, this is the position that we talked about when we were looking at all of IT to split out what was specific to public safety, right? But also included in that was now the needs that you're identifying in the police station and the building of it as to what needs to happen related to that. But that's the same type of position. It's the same person. This job is the same skill set. So then they could be the person where we had...
Right.
Because we had someone...
We have these needs regardless of the police station project.
Right.
We do have a specific need for these to be dealt with sooner than later, but once that work's done, there's plenty of IT-
Right.
-that this person will continue doing.
Yep.
And a lot of what John Barker, the consultant we had hired, as far as reviewing our backup not being tested, he reviewed all of our hardware and software, and actually, he just... We just renewed maintenance agreements on equipment that was expiring. So we've been following through on what John Barker's recommended also.
Yep.
So it's... I think the timing is good, looking at moving the main IT from this building to the new police station and just having backup here.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, suggestions?
Nope.
All right. Well, I move that we approve the job description as drafted.
I'll second that.
Do you find any typos?
No. I was good with it.
I had Lorraine proofread it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The motion carries. It's unanimous.
I was just waiting to say aye.
Lakeville Lions Family Fun Festival to be held on Saturday, September 9. We've been invited to attend. This is an open-to-the-public event. It is... Wow, that's bad. I gotta go back far back. September 9, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., the Lions Family Fun Festival will take place at 170 Main Street. There'll be games, food, music. And it's a great event. They've... I think they held this last year. It was really well-attended, and I think, obviously, that they do a great job with projects in the town. And I know that they do a lot of fundraising efforts for the sake of the causes that they champion. So we're just announcing this out to the public to... Oh, wait, but wait, there's more.
Yeah. Rich gave you a whole...
Am I supposed to read this?
I think he wanted you to.
Okay. It's written like a press release, much like the one that I wrote for Roller Jam back in my public relations days. Roller Jam was featured on the Nashville Network, which is now known as Spike TV. Lakeville Lions to host the Second Annual Fall Family Fun Festival. Fun with alliteration. Lakeville, Mass. On Saturday, September 9, the Lakeville Lions will be hosting their Second Annual Fall Family Fun Festival. All of Lakeville is invited, as are anyone else that happened to be hearing this message. Good people of Mars, you are invited to come to the local fall festival if you are receiving this message. There'll be food, local craft beer, games and activities, tethered balloon rides... That sounds interesting. Music, and lots of fun. Party starts at 2:00, and it will wind... Wind. Is that how you spell wind?
Yep.
Down at 7:00 p.m. This is located at 170 Main Street. Bobby Joyle is the president. He went on to say that last year's event drew 650 people. Where are they going to put 650 people? I have no idea, but they hope for even more people this year. So the long and short of it is, they'll have a couple bounce houses, a dunk tank, a private vendor doing face painting. There'll be rides in a tethered hot air balloon, traditional field games, loop-a-ball, wiffle-ball, softball, beanbag toss, and volleyball. You can bring your own... You can even bring your own games. Let's say game free-for-all. Admission is free. The food is available for purchase, and this is a great opportunity for people to come and enjoy this event. So go to the event.
Last year, they came to us prior to, and we talked about a police detail. I want to make sure they have a police detail this year. There's a lot of people. A lot of parking along 105, which is not legal. So I want to make sure that-
Can you check last year, Tracy?
We had a police detail there last year.
Had two or one?
Several.
I don't... I don't know.
Yeah, they had a lot of police there last year.
You need to make sure that they have a police detail or details, singular or plural.
I would think that they have that in place. I mean, I'm not speaking for them, but...
One would think so. So I'm not trying to mix it in with this. I'm just... Last year, they came to us and said, here's what we're having, which I... They don't have to come to us, but-
Right.
Let's make sure they have that. That's all.
Good point. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is to discuss the banned bond anticipation note renewal due on September 19, 2017. We have the following up for renewal that totals $1,050,000. $550,000 for a new pumper with equipment for the fire department. $100,000 for a new backhoe with equipment for the highway department. $400,000 for the design for a new police station. After the fiscal year '18 schedule paydown... Somebody should tell the chair not to eat while he's reading. I'm even annoying myself. The balance will be $920,000. So 110K paydown for the new pumper, $20,000 paydown for the backhoe, and zero paydown for the design of the police station. So the question is, do we want to renew this for three months instead of 12 months, so we can have free cash available to appropriate at the special town meeting for the paydown of part of all the short-term debt? Total short-term debt is $1.555 million. And then we have a schedule of debt. So I guess we'll just open this up to discussion to the board.
But I think we have it here because the band's coming due. I would certainly like to pay off debt. So having said that, I'd like to just write it for that short period, so that we get together and not just address these, but to be other things that we should pay off and perhaps fund the OPEB liability and things like that that were taken back at the town meeting. But whether it was taken back or not, we need to be paying for that. So it isn't... We're only mentioning this million... $200,000. Million... $50,000 just because it's due, but there's other things that we can also pay off. So that's why I would like to do the short-term note, just so we can make sure we're ready for the town meeting if you folks agree.
Okay.
I agree with a three-month on that, too. I mean, our short-term debt is more than half. It's like 65, 70% of our total non-exempt debt. And that's what we fund and balance our operating budget on, is our ability to be able to go out and pay off over a longer period of time some of these capital projects and capital items that we need. I am not a big fan of having excess debt, so as we're adding on, which will be exempt, the police station debt. But, you know, we always have the option to kind of look at that and look at our debt schedule. And any time that we have the ability to pay anything off sooner, I'm happy to look at that and be able to make that decision and not lock ourselves into not being able to after we were unable to pay $80,000 of it from the town meeting result. I don't want that to happen again to the point where all you're doing is kicking the can down the road, and the debt needs to be paid. So not paying a payment on the debt doesn't do any good for anybody, and I'd like to have that option available at the fall town meeting.
I think we have a responsibility to do that. I think that the plans, our budget plans at the annual town meeting were sidelined for the sake of, for the lack of a better term, a special interest group, which is fine, that's politics. But I don't think that that speaks to the... I don't think that detracts from the thoughtfulness of our initial plan. I think we need to stick with our initial plan. We need to get that money into the OPEB. We need to get that money... We need to use this money to pay down debt when we can. So I agree with this as well.
Yeah. The two big items, obviously, we... The new ambulance got delivered the last day or two, sitting in the garage waiting to be outfitted. So that should be in service in two to four weeks. Need state inspections and things like that. And so that's in... The pumper truck looks like first of the year into December. God only knows when that's going to come. I think they're building it piece by piece. But anyways, the ambulance came. And so that's a good thing. So we just vote on...
Just to vote to renew for three months.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? The motion carries. It's unanimous. Agenda item number six is to talk about the sale of the property located at 239 Main Street, the assessor's office. So we had a request for proposals, which the deadline was through August 23rd. We received zero. Since then, the for-sale signs were posted on the property on Tuesday, August 29th, and we received at least three.
Update? Two more today?
Nice. So there's five. So the signs worked. There's actual interest. The question is, do we want to re-advertise the RFP? I mean, I think the answer, obviously, is yes. Just the question just is-
Deadlines?
Yeah, I mean, what is the... What was the last... How long did you have it on last time? Is there a requirement?
I think we had it.
Go to the central register. So I get the ad in tomorrow. It will be out on 13th, and we have to advertise, I believe, at least two weeks before the bids can be opened. So the earliest we could open them would be September 28th.
Maybe go out a little bit longer.
And we're telling people who call that-
Yes.
Like you've got their numbers to call them back to say when it goes back on.
All but one person would want it to stay anonymous.
If I were looking for a piece of real estate, I wouldn't be reading that central register.
You stay anonymous.
I'd be going on multiple listing.
Call back.
And why don't we want to do a multiple listing? Because of the commission? I mean-
We'd have to get quotes.
So we're hindered by municipal law in how we're able to sell?
We can use a real estate broker as well, but we have to follow-
We have to get quotes for the real estate broker.
Correct.
Right, but a real estate broker's going to give us their percentage commissions. Yes.
That's what you're...
But someone can just say, well, I'll give you 4%, and they never advertise. They list on a multiple listing and someone else sells it. But I would not look for a piece of property without going to multiple listing. So I get the signs. You might be lucky. But people just do everything on the internet. Now, your commission is what? Is it less than 10 but more than six, generally?
It's generally six, but it's negotiable. So it could be anywhere from four to six.
So 6% is... We'll call it north of $10,000. I still suggest that. I think the... The central register is a waste of time. You can do it there.
We have to do it there, John. That's the law. The value's over $35,000. We have to advertise.
Right, but I don't know that... Well, no interested parties came forward-
Right.
-with that. So you can still do a real estate broker who's going to put them on multiple listing. Can you put it on multiple listing with a loan to a real estate broker?
Yes, you can just hire somebody just to list it for a flat fee of, say, $500 or whatever.
I would do that, for sure.
You'd get more... Potentially get a lot more interest. I mean, I think that it's amazing you got five people.
I think you met with somebody, too, so it's six.
Yeah, so...
Right, but if you can pay someone $500 or $1,000, or whatever the number is, to put it on multiple listing, I'd suggest you do that. Two. It's cheap money. You're going to broaden your base.
Yeah, I mean, call me tomorrow. We can talk about that, because, I mean, maybe that's a question for KP Law in terms of how... You're not hiring an agent or a broker for the sake of listing the property. You're just hiring somebody to get it on MLS, and that's all they do. And it's a very specific requirement, or I should say, it's a very specific service they're providing. They're not going to meet anybody at the property and show it. They're not... All they simply do is put the information you give them on the internet.
I'll call Mark Rich tomorrow.
Right, if that gets all snawled up on paperwork for $1,000, then shame on everyone.
All right, that should be easy. And it should be as simple as-
Just go ahead and do it.
You know, interested parties go to this website and place a bid, and that's it. For more information, call Town Hall.
Yeah, the bids will still have to come through the process of the paperwork, the disclosure.
That's okay.
Right, but the form of the bid can be there, so they can download it, and then they can print it out and fill it out and send it in.
Because the RFP is on our website right now, and we kept it up there.
Yes, it links to that.
So it's...
Right.
They can download the whole.
You'll get... To John's point-
Yep.
Maybe you get another six, eight, 10 people that are interested. I mean, you can just widen it, and the game is highest bidder. So it really makes sense for the money to do it. It's pretty short. And honestly, if, depending on what they say... I have my broker's license. I'm a member of MLS. I can list it. Now, I need to talk about that with you and Mark Rich. I wouldn't get paid to do that, obviously, but I also want to make sure that I have no liability in doing that.
Get someone else.
You see what I mean?
Get someone else to do it and pay them the $5,000 or $1,000.
Right. I would rather do it that way. But my point is, is that I don't think that this is a big deal to do, but we just got to talk it through, and we'll figure that out. And I think it's a great suggestion. As good as those signs are, they're only hitting people that happen to drive by Lakeville. There's guys, and women, too, probably, that look for houses to flip. You know, they buy them, they renovate them, they sell them, and they're all over southeastern Massachusetts, and they only look online. They don't drive through Lakeville on a regular basis.
That's a good idea.
So I think with that said, we definitely want to extend the bid process, and maybe we do want to do it a little longer.
October 15th. Why do I think that's a good date?
Sounds good.
That's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday, so...
The 13th.
Friday the 13th.
Sure. Friday the 13th, that'd be our lucky day.
And, you know, we're going to get the haunted ghost people. It'll become on the Middleborough Ghost Door.
That is a haunted building. What? So I'm told. So all right, so that's the game plan. We'll work out the details on it, but I think we're all in agreement. We want to, obviously, re-advertise, and we'll shoot for October 13th for the deadline. And then whatever we do in MLS doesn't affect what Tracy's doing. She can repost and do her thing, and that's independent. And then the listing itself is just a different way to market people towards the central register.
We didn't expect too many... We did have a couple of calls in the central... From the central register, people that saw it, but we didn't really expect...
The other thing, too, is how many people are even familiar with how to bid on the central register? I mean, I'm not personally, so I don't know how-
It refers to our website, I believe.
If you have to subscribe, you can get the central register or go to the library and look at it there.
So you have to subscribe to it to even bid it? How does that... What's the process of signing up for that?
It's through the Secretary of State's office. I really don't know.
Right.
Because we don't have to.
All the vendors typically are...
Sure, no, I get it, but people wanting to buy a home to remodel it aren't-
The central register is basically just an... Central register is basically just an ad. And then the ad directs them to our website to get the- It just basically says, this is what you have, this is who has it, this is the date and time you have to bid on it, and go here.
And then what's the process to bid, then, for them? They just-
Download the document. There's a bunch of forms they have to fill out, and then they have to submit, seal bid to our office.
So you can look up all that information on our website without going to the central register?
Correct, yes.
All right. So we really want the MLS to direct people to the town website for the sake of our- So we can work out these details tomorrow. Central register is a red herring in the whole process. All right, do we have old business? What?
Once I don't.
Any new business?
No.
Well-
Other than executive session?
I don't know about the EDC meetings, if you want to call that new business or any other.
Thank you for reminding me that. I knew there was something I was thinking of. So the EDC met last night. And we struggled through the meeting. Because what I'm finding is, I'll back up so I can see both of you a little better. We really are at a point where we've kind of concluded all of the work we wanted to do in terms of zoning changes, doing research about different aspects of economic development, all that stuff. We're really kind of directionless. I asked the people in the EDC several meetings ago and subsequent meetings to come to me with any ideas on, in the terms, in terms of what they want to do or what they want the mission of the group to be. And nobody really, nobody provided any insight, honestly. So my thought is, I want to keep that group intact, but I don't want to have consistent meetings until we have something to do. Kind of like the casino advisory committee.
Right, just sitting there.
Yeah, it would be great if a, if a project came to town and we needed the EDC to mobilize and get information and study stuff for the sake of giving us some insight on stuff. It's a, it's a useful group for that. But we're sitting there talking about compiling commercial listings. I wasn't, but somebody was. And I thought, this, this really isn't a good use of our time. Not to say that that isn't a bad thing for somebody to do, because maybe it is. But that's nothing, that's not going to provide the board of selectmen with advice and guidance on how to make decisions relative to economic development. And that's what the mission is of that board. So it's gotten a little bit watered down, and it's gotten kind of a point where I want to kind of put it on the shelf. But I didn't want to do that without talking with, with the two of you first.
I guess my only thought would be, maybe we can recruit some of those people over there. More than welcome to attend our CDC meetings.
Oh, for shame.
As we had our meeting earlier tonight, with our Winterfest date scheduled for January twenty-ninth. That, you know, really, if they want to attend something of a meeting like that, we have associate memberships available for CDC. But also, some of those people might have really good connections to be able to get our sponsorships to the community. So I-
You should see if they can do the tethered balloon rides. I'm not even joking.
In the winter?
Why not? Over Ted Williams Camp. That'd be really cool.
It's all it got to do with wind. There's no wind.
No, you go right up, you'd see the pond off in the background.
I'll ask the lines.
It can't be windy.
Yeah. Or freezing cold or snowstorm or-
No, it can be cold.
It can be cold, just can't be windy.
Cold. Yeah.
Did you just say the twenty-ninth, though? I thought it was the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, just kidding. Last year was the twenty-eighth. It's the twenty-eighth. Very.
Do you really remember the date?
January twenty-eighth? Yeah, because I just looked at the-
Human calendar.
Just did it about thirty-five minutes ago. I certainly agree to keep it intact the opportunity where we can give it some tasks to do when there really aren't any. I think people that are on the committee and everyone says, oh, there's an empty building there. Why don't we try to help market it? But that isn't really our purview. That's the landlord or the owner of the property who is going to sit on that property. There's been vacant property now for several years.
Right.
And it's a price point. I can say to someone, geez, by the way, you're five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars too high.
Right.
Why don't you reduce it? Well, that's none of my business.
Yep, it's a business decision.
I don't even know what his business is.
Yeah.
Why he has it priced like he does? I, I have no idea. But I know that our job, their job, might not be to market properties that we don't own.
Right.
Now we get involved in things that we shouldn't get involved in.
I mean, we, we had met with a woman. Somebody from the state.
Yep, Maria Morasco.
Yes, who offered to send us information on TIFs. So we got the information on TIFs, and we started talking about it, saying, this is absurd.
Why would you ever give a TIF when you've got one?
Well, no, but we're discussing something, it was, it was an exercise in, in, it was, it was a role play, honestly. It was like fictional. It was like, well, do we even have a piece of property that's big enough to utilize a TIF for the sake of development? And then the second question is, do we even want to give one? So I, right away, I thought, we're, we're now just doing, we're just doing, talking for the sake of, we're meeting for the sake of meeting and talking for the sake of talking. We're not doing anything that is, is, is moving, moving it forward.
The only thing that I could think of, too, is that there was conversation multiple times about establishing a website for the EDC. And I know that we're talking about maybe redoing our website. And if that's, the goal, I would think, would be, you know, you're really, it's a marketing arm to try to compete with other local towns to try to get businesses to locate here. That's all it is. It doesn't have to be active, but if all of the surrounding communities around you are trying to generate new business because they're really going out there and marketing to try to, you know, make their presence known that we have a low tax rate, we have this, we have that, we're access to highways. It's one of those things where you could be looked at as a sleepy town that no one knows much about, and why would you locate in Lakeville? You know, you don't know anything about it versus someone who knows more about Middleborough, and they've got more commercial property. And so it's, how much do you really want to go into it? Because it either requires a full-on effort.
Marketing someone's property that we don't own.
Well, that's, you're marketing the town, is what, it should be the town.
Yeah, but having a listing of, of developed properties for rent doesn't benefit the town. What do we care whether they're rented? Honestly, we get the tax money whether they're rented or not.
All it would be, would be if you-
Maybe that's what it became.
Right. I think that, that the concept behind it is likely more, what, what's available? Like the industrial park, you know, do we have any other land? We don't have any land like that, you know, anymore.
Left.
Yeah, and-
There's very little for us to do. I think the big thing was recommending the zoning change on Main Street, which then the zoning bylaw review committee got involved with. I mean, I think that was, that was a great example of something positive that, that the Economic Development Committee did that could affect in a positive way some commercial development. But there's really nothing left like that at this time. So-
Right. And as you read through the TIFs, obviously, it's usually towns that have dual tax rates. And they're trying to incentivize the business to come.
Right.
At a thirteen-dollar tax rate, you don't do that.
Right.
New Bedford has to do it because they're north of thirty dollars. I could say forty, but, but I read it, and I'm not remembering the exact number. But you can't give out a TIF and have a thirteen-dollar tax rate because now you've not got any tax money coming in for services that you're providing.
You're subsidizing the services.
You're subsidizing that.
When the TIF expires, they disappear.
We have no desire to do that. When the property value becomes economically feasible for someone to develop it, they will.
Right.
When the landlord wants to drop their rent to a reasonable rate, then they'll rent it.
Right. It's market-driven.
It's market-driven.
And there aren't, there, there's no, there's no parcel that is ideal for commercial development in the sense that there aren't services, the typical services you get in Middleborough, or Rainham, or Taunton, or Bedford, with the sewer, water, and gas being right there. I mean, we have some of those things, but we don't have all of those things. And that's really the biggest limitation to development we have as a town. Which is fine, because I think that, that works to put the brakes on development beyond the rate that the residents are comfortable with.
Sewer and water is required. You have the water available in certain sections. The surge remarkably has been solved its own problems by being able to put a million-dollar treatment center in and have four, five hundred houses or a commensurate number of industrial buildings, if you will, which there is no industrial buildings in America today, aside from Raytheon and a few other people.
Yeah.
Building bonds.
I'm good with that concept of leaving them as a committee but not meeting regularly. Again, more than encouraged to-
Nancy got engaged.
No, I didn't.
Did that ring?
It has another purpose.
You just noticed it.
It has a bigger purpose.
You didn't notice that ring.
No, I didn't, until you said something.
Oh, sure.
We're not an Nancy man at the Selectmen's Board.
No, I don't know. I shouldn't have said that.
I think it, I think it should go somewhat in limbo.
Yeah.
Every town seems to want to follow another town as they create committees. We're a sleepy town, and there's not a lot that goes on here.
No, and I think, I think we, as a committee, though, or as a board, we've learned that ourselves. I mean, I think we, we had to dive in and get our hands dirty, so to speak, with all of this stuff to kind of know what we know, you know? We, I personally had to go through this process of getting involved, reaching out to the community, figuring out what we can do.
In the serpent presentation, if you will, for the hospital site, I hope that whoever bought the property, will go back and look at all the things that were suggested to be done.
Sure.
And use that as a vehicle. And we can help them if, help them in suggestions, agreeing, or whatever as that process goes through.
All right, so that was the conversation about EDC. So we will shelve that. I want to let Lori know-
Eat as needed.
Let Lori know not to invite that guy in October.
Okay.
Because no one will be here.
Will the guy sponsor Winterfest? She can invite him to Winterfest.
I think he was a commercial real estate agent. Yeah, maybe you could get some, get some money out of him.
Our next meeting's in September.
Any new business? Any other business that may properly come before the meeting?
Are we talking about negotiations?
John wanted to go-
Right, so we'll enter executive session for, for an update on, on union negotiations. And I'll read the, the-
Number three.
I'll cast the spell. All right. We are going to enter executive session. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one.
Three.
Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. I do declare, and we will not come back into open session.
And regarding the fire union.
Regarding the fire union is my motion. I move that.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Burke, aye? All right. Thanks, everyone. We're done.